Good evening, Stonecrest. Welcome to the City Council meeting of October twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five. The time now is six oh seven P. M. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind to give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Mayor Jasmine Cobble.
Present.
Councilmember Tara Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Fai.
Present.
Councilmember Alicia Washington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will start this meeting off with an invocation led by Pastor John Elmore from the Three D Church. Pastor, yes, please. Make sure the little green light is on.
All right. I'm grateful to be here. Thank you all for the opportunity, and I'm humbled and honored to serve from a live city church, our church here in the city of Stonecrest, where we, I call ourselves trench walkers. We're in the trenches. We love our people. We love our community. And any support that you all may need from us, we will give it. I know most of you, and I'm grateful for you. I do want to say this as we open up today, that I know we're here to handle business and businesses in order, but we want to wrap it in spirit and wrap it in truth, and we thank God for that. So we could just have a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you. Dear heavenly and gracious Father, we ask now for clarity. God, we ask now for communication. God, we thank you for these amazing city council members who lift up this city, the pillars of this community, as well as the cornerstone that holds up this Stonecrest wall, called Stonecrest the city. God, we ask now that you come into this meeting, bring wisdom, guidance, and agreement. God, I pray for peace that surpasses all understanding, as your word declares. Give us hope that we can continue to build and be great in your name. It's in your name we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, come back to the podium, please. We have a little something for you, and Mayor will address you.
Pastor, we, um, come, come, come right here. Let everybody see your jacket fly. You know, we, uh, we go back a couple of years, and, uh, the work you all have been doing in our community is outstanding, from what you do to our use to give them exposure, uh, to all kinds of things behind the camera, behind the music industry. If y'all don't know, this is a Grammy Award-winning producer, like, seriously, a Grammy Award-winning producer. If you Google him, you will see his accolades right here in the city of Stonecrest. And what he and his wife have done with their church is expose our students to behind-the-scenes and music entertainment and film. And so we constantly are talking about, uh, we hear a lot about what's in front of the camera, but honestly, it's the jobs behind the camera that are sustainable to our economy and to our students. And this gentleman, his wife, and their entire staff, including some of my Albany State alum, are, uh, doing great work i- in our city, so we can't thank you enough. They also participate in many of our events through our Parks and Recs team, uh, and we are just honored to have, we had him at Screen on the Green, uh, the Easter egg drop, these all kinds of stuff throughout the year. They're very active, uh, in our community. So on behalf of the city of Stonecrest, first of all, thank you for what you do to our community. Thank you for serving our community. Thank you for not thinking to go anywhere else but to stay right here in this city. We appreciate that and all that you do. Your, your reach is far beyond Stonecrest, but we love to say that Stonecrest is your home. So on behalf of the city of Stonecrest, City Council, the mayor's office, we want to just give you a small token of our appreciation. It ain't a Grammy, but it's, but you know, it's shiny. You can see through it. It has our name on it. You can put it next to the Grammy. So we have, on behalf of us and our good old government budget that's on the, um, um, calendar today, this is a small token of our appreciation. Uh, just say thank you for what you do, and please do tell your better half. We said we love her. Thank you. You're welcome. Here you go.
Yeah, you know, I love you. I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council, we have before you an agenda. You've had a chance to, uh, peruse it. Is there a need for any adjustments? You're none, I entertain a motion for approval.
Tim?
Councilwoman Grimes?
I make motion that we approve the budget. I mean, oh, Lordy. You know what I've been thinking? Know what I've been thinking about?
Order, 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 order.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Let me start that over. Mayor Pro Tim?
Councilwoman Grimes?
I make motion that we approve the agenda as stated.
Second. Is Rep. Laubin second by Councilwoman Graves that we approve the agenda as stated. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye opposed as next, other district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda is the minutes from the work session of June nine. Any corrections? You're none, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to approve the minutes for the approval of the minutes for work session June ninth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
I'm proud to move to second to approve the minutes from the work session of June ninth. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye opposed as next, other district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
Four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The next is the approval of the minutes from the work session of September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Any corrections? You're none, I entertain the motion for approval.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Councilwoman Fa- Councilman Fai.
Um, almost. Uh, I would like to approve the, I move to approve the minutes for September eighth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
If Rep. Laubin moves in second to approve the minutes from the work session of September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye opposed as next, other district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. Any corrections?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Councilman Fai?
Um, under the public comments section, just a general friendly reminder, um, just a general note, just to change, um, man with member, and then for decision changing no le- um, changing no less than to, um, changing not less than to no less than, just for grammar.
Okay. Correction. Anything else? You're none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty second with the stated corrections.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Councilman Fai.
I move to a print, uh, I move to approve the minutes from September twenty second as amended, um, for, for the city council meeting.
Second.
If Rep. Laubin moves in second to approve the minutes, September twenty second with the stated corrections amendment, are you ready for the question? All of those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye opposed as next, other district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The agenda, I'm sorry, the minutes from September twenty second are now approved. Next on the agenda, public hearing. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind as, I'm sorry? Public comments. That's what I said? No, I said something else. Okay. Um, at this time, we will, uh, read the rule for public comments. Madam City Clerk, please.
Citizens wishing to make a public comment may do so in person. Citizens may also submit public comments via email to cityclerk@stonecrestga.gov by two P. M. on the day of the meeting to be read by the city clerk. All members of the public wishing to address the city council shall submit their name and the topic of their comments to the city clerk prior to the start of any meeting held by the city council. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker submitting or reading a public comment. Individuals will be held to those established time limits.
Thank you very much. Press speaker.
Peter Freidrich?
Evening, Mayor, Council. Stonecrest sits on Flat Rock, one of Georgia's oldest black communities. After the Civil War, formerly enslaved peoples became the first black owners in DeKalb County, built churches, schools, businesses, used legal rights to lift up their community. That is what civil rights law does, protect the vulnerable through legal structures. Georgia State Senate Bill three seventy-five does the exact opposite. The Coalition of Hindu North America scored in California and celebrated when it was vetoed. But then they turned around in Georgia and demanded S. B. three seventy-five to add Hindu phobia to anti-discrimination statutes with no definition. They oppose protecting, opposing discrimination, violence, but demand vague protections weaponizable against critics. Under S. B. three seventy-five, DeKalb County and Stonecrest must consider Hindu phobia when investigating complaints, but the bill never defines Hinduism. Kona already labels anti-caste activism as anti-Hindu bigotry. S. B. three seventy-five gives them Georgia a lot to enforce that. Now look who's pushing us. Georgia Senator Sean Still faces seven felony charges, racketeering, impersonating a public officer, forgery, for allegedly serving as a fake elector alongside Donald Trump. His campaign received nearly ten thousand dollars from Kona's network and still admits the bill came from ongoing conversations with them. They paid, he delivered. That PAC's top donors include leaders and organizers of a group registered with the U. S. D. O. J. as a foreign agent, the overseas friends of the B. J. P., operating on behalf of India's ruling party. The Hindu American Foundation also backs this bill, calling it vital legislation, and faces a federal complaint alleging it operates as an unregistered foreign agent with the Indian Embassy describing their relationship as fiduciary. Why does this matter? Federal prosecutors charged Nikhil Gupta with conspiring to murder an American Sikh critic of India's government directed by an operative in India's intelligence services targeting an American citizen on U. S. soil for protected speech. His trial starts next month. When assassination fails, you need legal weapons, harassment investigations, forcing critics to rack up legal fees, defending their speech, and that is what S. B. three seventy-five provides. Stonecrest, this perverts your legacy and forces you to enforce laws which invert civil rights principles. Flat Rock's formerly enslaved peoples used law to become landowners. Civil rights law protects the vulnerable from the powerful. S. B. three seventy-five protects powerful movements from criticism. Please consider passing a resolution opposing S. B. three seventy-five, not because you oppose protecting Hindus. Existing law does that, but because a politician facing seven felony counts took nearly ten thousand dollars from a PAC whose top donors include leaders and organizations of a group registered as a foreign agent. That is not civil rights. That is corruption, and I have distributed for every member of the council an information packet on the issue. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next?
Bay Caulfield?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I do have to agree with the previous speaker. We have been looking at S. B. three seventy-five because it does not include black folks as being protected. So that's all I'm gonna say on that. But here's what I want you to understand. I want you to pass a, a, a rule because New Birth set a precedent when they came here with their proposal. They didn't walk in here with some Mickey Mouse pictures out of a magazine at Home Depot. They came with, they brought what they wanted to build, exactly where they were going to build it, how they were going to build it. They came with all the plans for all the houses that were going to be on the property. They talked about, most importantly, who is, who was going to finance it, and they were talking about how long it would take for them to complete the project. We have too many developers that walk up in here with a piece of paper and some pictures from Home Depot and tell us what they're going to build, and they end up building something else. We have too many developers that come in here, and just as they did down on Hayden Quarry, when they promised they were not going to take down the trees, they clear cut the property. So we need to be more diligent. We need to require that everybody come here with some facts, just like New Birth has come here, whether you agree with it, want to see it or not, but they have the facts. And most importantly, when they decide to clear cut land like they did on Hayden Quarry, that they be required to either make all of the houses to the front face the street or else they be required to put up a solid wall. That's what they have to do in other counties when they do that. And this, I mean, it's, it's just fact. You know, one group comes in here prepared, showing us what they have, showing us what they're going to do. Somebody else comes in here with some Mickey Mouse foolishness, and we end up with what, what we don't want. So like I said, I'm not taking one side or another. Nobody didn't ask me to speak on behalf of New Birth, but I'm going to say that they came correct. They came the way you should make every, and you could, you now know it can be done because New Birth is a nonprofit. These developers got plenty money to go and do it right and to present the right type of proposal. So make the developers, they don't even live here. At least New Birth is here. So make them do the right thing. New Birth can't take that church and go anywhere, but these developers, they disappear back to the north side.
Thank you for your comments. Next? That's the last public comment. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind as to read the rule for public hearing?
Citizens wishing to participate and comment during the public hearing portion of the meeting may comment in person. You may also submit your request, including your full name, address, position on the agenda item you are commenting on, whether it is for or against, via email to cityclerk@stonecrestga.gov by two P. M. on the day of the public hearing to be read into the record at the meeting. A Zoom link for the meeting will be sent to you upon your request. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name, address, and relationship to the case. There is a ten-minute time limit for each item per side during all public hearings. Only the applicant may reserve time for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. First case on public hearing is an ordinance for RZ two five dash zero zero nine, six three seven zero Woodrow Road. Director Cowie.
Mayor Pro Tim? Can you hear me? Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
City Council. This is RZ two five zero zero nine, six three seven zero Woodrow Road, um, Mr. Odophilus Armstrong, who's doing the business for New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. This is a rezoning and map amendment request of the property from R one hundred to M. U. mixed-use medium density for a mixed-use development. A little background about the property. It is currently zoned R one hundred. The applicant survey indicates that there are no wetland areas on the property. The applicant is requesting to rezone the tax parcel known as six three seven zero Woodrow Road from R one hundred to M. U. three for a residential and commercial development. Public participation. The property owners within one thousand feet of the subject property were mailed notices of the proposed rezoning and map amendment request in August, two thousand and twenty five. A community planning information meeting was held on September the eleventh. Fourteen participants spoke at this meeting in reference to the funding of the project, maintenance of the project, safety of the residents, ownership, amenities, and services. Again, currently, the property is zoned R one hundred. The future land use map has this area designated as institutional public. The overlay zoning map, it is located in the Stonecrest Overlay District, Tier Four. This is an aerial map of the location of the property. This is a submitted concept plan. The current elevations for, um, phase one. Again, this is a location map. This is a site photo from, um, looking towards, um, Woodrow Road. Another site location map. This is a site location from the corner, the corner of Woodrow Road. Site location. Lithonia Industrial. And towards, um, Lithonia Industrial. Staff did recommend approval of the rezoning request and map amendment with conditions. The developer shall conduct a noise decibel or acoustic analysis test to ensure that amplified sounds are mitigated to an acceptable level as to not cause unreasonable disturbance to the neighboring residential community, and they shall establish the maximum decibel levels at the prop- property boundaries. Developers shall maintain an undisturbed buffer between the proposed development and the adjacent community along the length of the property to help with mitigating sounds from the development, build out an amphitheater, and limit from the development, build out an amphitheater, and limit the intensity and scale of uses closest, closest to the developed residential communities. Developers shall submit a lighting plan to show that there will be no excess outdoor lighting or the creation of light pollution. A construction mitigation plan shall be submitted and approved by the Community Development Division's director, including limits on construction hours, dust control measures, truck routing to minimize neighborhood disruption. Planning commission also approved with staff recommendations, and there was a variance request that was approved on October 21st, 2025. Mayor Protim and City Council, the applicants are here. If you have any additional questions?
Thank you very much. Council, you have any questions I can sign before we open the floor for public hearing? Here are none, we entertain a motion for, to go into public hearing on this item?
Mayor Protim?
That's woman Grimes.
Make motion that we go into, that we open public hearing for RZ 25009-6370 Woodrow Road.
Second?
It's been properly moved in second to open the floor for public hearing on RZ 25-009-6370 Woodrow Road. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye. Opponents, they sound like District 1.
Aye.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4 is aye. District 5?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Floor is now open for public hearing on this item.
In 2016, the Church coordinated with DeKalb County through eminent domain dedicating five acres to the Lithonia Industrial Boulevard Extension Project. Due to the Church's advocacy, New Birth Industrial Boulevard now extends to Woodrow Road. We are here to a day to affirm that a dream deferred is not a dream denied. New Birth has been blessed with not just one, but two visionary leaders. Picking up the torch from Bishop Long, Dr. Bryant has recast and reimagined the dream of senior housing as a mixed-use development to meet the evolving needs of the Stonecrest community. New Birth Village represents the fulfillment of that vision. New Birth Village is a mixed-use, faith-anchored community that adds attainable housing, neighborhood-serving retail, green infrastructure, and workforce development to accelerate Stonecrest's economic mobility and quality of life. The project transforms underutilized land into a resilient, walkable district that creates jobs, grows the tax base, and delivers concrete public benefits from day one. New Birth Village has two sponsors, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church and New Birth Community Development Corporation. New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, guided by New Birth Missionary Baptist Church Real Estate Committee under the spiritual leadership of Reverend Dr. Jamal H. Bryant and committee chair who's here today, Mr. Leighton Ho, serves as the anchor institution providing vision, land, and faith-based leadership for the project. Project management is further strengthened by Elder Maurice Waddell, the Church's chief operating officer, and me. We bring operational and financial expertise to the development. New Birth Village's second sponsor is New Birth Community Development Corporation chaired by Dr. Michael V. Roberts, who is also here today behind me. The CDC is the nonprofit arm dedicated to advancing community development, affordable housing, and an economic empowerment through the New Birth Village Initiative. Our sponsors have put together a superior development team. The project's technical and execution strategy is led by Dr. Vanessa Williams Nash, managing partner of the Williams Nash Agency, supported by a team of experienced professionals including the following: Tyrone Williams, engineer and project manager; Jabari Herbert, licensed general contractor and program project manager; Antonio Samples, Everly &amp; Associates Civil Site Design Engineers; Adam Williamson, TSW Lead Residential Homes Design Architects; Techie Homes, Housing Innovation and Construction; HCO Architects, Lead Design Architects, Phase 2 Senior Housing Development; and McCormick Baron Salazar, National Developer, Mixed Use and Affordable Housing. At this point, I would like to introduce Mr. Jabari Herbert, will provide some additional details on the rezoning and variance request being presented today for consideration.
Good evening. My name is Jabari Herbert, project manager with the Williams Nash Agency. I'm just gonna speak on the project sponsor's specific request for rezoning and variance approval. The project sponsor's specific request is for rezoning and variance approval. The project sponsor, as was stated, is New Birth Missionary Baptist Church and the New Birth Community Development Corporation, respectively submitted this request for rezoning and variance approval in connection with the New Birth Village project. The request, the requested rezoning is necessary to align the current land use designation with the project's vision of a mixed-use community that integrates residential, commercial, and community-serving amenities. This designation would allow for the thoughtful combination of single and multifamily housing, senior housing, and community facilities alongside supported retail and services that will enhance the livability for the community and residents of Stonecrest. The requested variance is sought to support design flexibility that promote both functionality and quality of life, ensuring that site planning, setbacks, density, and parking ratios respond not only to technical feasibility but also to the unique needs of the surrounding community. These approvals will allow the project to deliver a walkable, sustainable, and inclusive village environment consistent with the goals outlined in the City of Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan. The project sponsor and specific request is for rezoning and variance approval. The justification, why rezoning and variance approval is critical, because it's advancing community goals. New Birth Village directly supports the city's objective of expanding housing options, encouraging economic development, and creating community hubs that fosters belonging. And without rezoning, the land cannot achieve its highest and best use for the resident it intends to serve and benefit. Meeting local housing needs, Stonecrest has experienced demand for attainable and diverse housing option, especially for working families, young professionals, and seniors. Rezoning and variance enables the site to provide this variety while ensuring affordability and design quality. Catalyzing economic growth, by allowing a mixed-use designation, this project will bring new retail, small business opportunities, and services that expands the tax base and creates jobs while also attracting outside investments to Stonecrest. Community benefit and public good, the New Birth Village will create EV charging stations, workforce training opportunities, green space preservation, and community facilities that are only possible through the flexibility afforded by rezoning a parcel and variance approval. The approach, the approvals requested are fully consistent with Stonecrest's long-term vision of being a thriving, connected, and forward-looking city. They empower a development that honors the mission of New Birth to serve as both a spiritual and community anchor while fulfilling the city's land use and development strategy. Next, I'm gonna call up Dr. Vanessa Williams to speak on the community benefit. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, good. I have the best part of the presentation. I get to talk about community benefits and how our project will benefit the overall community. So to start, okay, again, my name is Vanessa Williams Nash. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. And when we're looking at the development itself for the New Birth Village, one of the main thrust of the Board of Directors and Dr. Bryant was to ensure that we weren't just a developer coming in here, building in the community, but we also wanted to get the pulse of the community and address some of the things that New Birth is able to see that the community needs overall. So in addressing some of the community benefits, I'd like to start off by sharing with you one of the first things that we have been told and we see that is needed is affordability. Not only will we be developing a housing development, but we will be developing a housing development that will address the actual affordability. You have many homes that are being built across the state, specifically here in DeKalb County, but the affordability for the working income folks is who we will be targeting with our development. That mom, that father, that family that has a regular job but would love to have economic empowerment through homeownership but cannot currently find a home within their price bracket, and we are now creating the environment for them to do such. So I have here is number one, housing affordability and stability, attainable workforce, attainable and priced for teachers, public safety, healthcare, service workers, income-qualified purchase, and rental options. We will be providing down payment assistance for those who qualify. With that down payment assistance, we will also have homebuyer education, and we will be delivering through our partner programs for targeted folks right here in Stonecrest first. You will receive a priority on our housing list if you are a member or in the actual surrounding zip code area of Stonecrest. We will also be focusing on homes that are actually focusing on the different needs, be it microhome, townhomes, or multifamily to meet the needs of both young buyers and senior buyers that are looking maybe to downsize. We will be looking at the, and creating an environment.
Mayor Protim, that is time. Did the council wish to extend?
That exhausts the 10 minutes allotted for those speaking in favor of it unless council is of the desire to extend it. By show of hand, how many people in the audience are here to speak in favor of this? Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, do you wish to extend this by five minutes or so?
Mayor Protim?
Counselman Fife?
I move to, I move to extend the public comment period for for and against by five, by five minutes for each.
Second?
It's been properly moved in second to extend the public comments to...
Public hearing, excuse me. Public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you very much. To extend the public hearing by five minutes for each side? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye. Opponents, they sound like District 1.
Aye.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4 is aye. District 5?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Public hearing is extended by five minutes for those who are speaking in favor of, and for those who are speaking in opposition to. You may continue. Keep in mind, you only have five minutes.
I will, yes, sir. That being said, will that include the other individuals that raised their hand from the community itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Well then, before that reason, I will speed up my process and just share with you that we will be focused on making, ensuring that those jobs that are created through our development also are able to empower local individuals and students, focusing on partnerships that are HBCUs, and we will be focusing on small business and entrepreneurial development and growth, as well as my colleague has already shared, shared with you all, green infrastructure, mobility and safety. We will be providing an actual alternative for seniors who are in need of housing and also are in need in transportation. We have an actual transportation option for them, and then of course, focusing on youth, health, and human services. And with that being said, I believe that Tyrone, who was our architect, has two minutes so we can actually allow the public to speak.
Good evening again. My name is Tyrone Williams. I'm a civil engineer. I'm the project technical manager for Williams Nash Agency. So I'll just touch base on... You've already seen where the parcel is located. What I'll highlight is this will be a mixed-use, the proposed development, we have a mixed-use development. It'll consist of commercial office, approximately 23,000 square feet, that may be increased. We're doing a marketing study right now. The residential will be 308 doors, 90, well, 101 doors. This number is a little off. It's 101 units that will be in the single family. The live-work will be 15 units, multifamily will be 144, and the seniors, townhomes will be 58 units. This is just a site, you're familiar with that. It's a wooded site, there's no standing bodies of water and no wetlands. The project will be executed in two phases. Phase 1 is the residential portion, that's in the portion highlighted in yellow. We anticipate starting that sometime in January and running through September 27th. That is a function of pre-sales, and then Phase 2 will probably start somewhere in third or fourth quarter of 2026. You've seen the, the land use plan, that is what we've submitted and will develop the parcel to look like. Again, those are the breakdowns. This is the landlot plan, and then just highlighting, you've seen the, the different floor plans. I think everything else has already been covered. I'll go ahead and just say that we're looking at making a premier community, it'll be a live-work-play type of community. You can see on the left side is the residential, and then the commercial mixed-use development will include rooftop entertainment, walking trails. That's the concept for that. Phase 2 is a community pavilion that'll be there, so I think that concludes. I'll turn over the time so that other people can speak.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, how much time is left? Two minutes? One minute each?
Dave Marcus?
Dave Marcus, 6501 Rockland Road, a neighbor of the project, not close, but this is an important project. We have so many things that look the same coming to Stonecrest. We have so many things coming the same to Stonecrest. They all look the same, they all are in the same price brackets, there is more sameness, there is no diversity of our architecture. This is... A good project has three things. It's the right project, in the right place, with the developer you trust. This meets all of these. It is a modern look, it is a size of dwellings that people can afford, and I don't mean necessarily minimum wage people because they can't, nope, they can't afford anything these days, but these prices are lower than most. I've taken a tour by the same builder of a similar development in Union City. The quality of materials, the quality of workmanship, the interior finishing is all unexpectedly high. This is an exciting project, and I urge you to permit it to go forward.
Thank you.
Caulfield?
Given everything that's been said, and most importantly, this project will bring a diverse group of people. These kind of units, they're not what I like because they're real, they're small, but this is what young kids want. Young kids live in these apartments downtown, they're small, that's what they want. And they're really not that small because I used to live in New York, and they're bigger than a New York apartment. It is something that we much, much need. We need to have something that will bring creative-thinking young people here so we can get some creative, young ideas. And I, I support it, you know, I thoroughly support it because it is, as has been said, it's something that's needed. The only thing I'm gonna ask you to do is to make sure that that property on the other side where they wanted to put the little truck thing, that it does not get rezoned so that we can make sure we have continuity from corner to corner.
Thank you very much for your comments. Excuse me while I take a 30-second break.
City Clerk? What is the, what's the time we have left on, what's the time we have left on? Five seconds, okay? Oh, since, have somebody there, Lord. This is interesting debacle. How's traffic?
I do apologize, we're okay here. I do apologize. We're okay here. Just that there are some personal things going on, and the mayor is going to have to depart for personal matters. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. We are at the point of hearing from those who are in opposition to AZ 25-009. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road? Anyone speaking in opposition to ordinance for AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road? Hearing none? And I don't think those, the applicant saved any time for rebuttal. So at this time, council will entertain a motion to close public hearing on AZ 25-009.
So moved.
It has been properly moved in second to close public hearing on AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye opposed, and they start at District one.
Absent.
District two?
Aye.
District three? District three?
Yes.
District four is aye, District five?
Aye.
Motion carries. District one? Motion carries five to zero. Public hearing is closed on this matter. Counsel, at this time, you can call for additional clarification from our director or you can entertain questions from the applicant.
Mayor Protem?
Counselwoman Graham.
Williams Nash, if you'd come back to the mic for me, please. Thank you. As I try to write down things that sound a little different than what I thought, rental options, if you can go back to that piece.
Yes, ma'am.
For me.
Phase two of the development will have a, potentially will have a rental component to it. And the rest of the development is for sale housing. And in that rental component, it is actually senior living.
Clarify. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Mayor Protem?
No, someone's back.
Is the developer from, is the specific builder, Techie Homes, here present tonight or represented from them?
No, he is not, he is not present tonight, but he is not the only developer that we have. We have several builders, and he's not the developer. The developer of the product and the project itself will be New Birth CDC and New Birth Church. We have three builders, however, that we have brought on to be a partner with us for expertise because they've done this in this space before, and which Techie Homes is one of those builders. The other is being of Cormac Baron and Salzar, who I'm sure you're very familiar with. They have $165 million development that they're doing in the city of Atlanta. They've done over $3 billion, but we also have... Adolphus? We also have Mr. Adolphus Armstrong who's here, and we have our architect that's here as well that can speak to any of the architectural issues, ma'am.
Okay, then, and so I just want to make sure, so these are, you're going to be having an HOA. Well, I planned some of my questions for Techie. So Techie is not just the only developer, the only builder in this, in this space.
No, sir.
It's a multi, it's a multi-mix.
They are, is correct. It's a multi-mix. They are one of the builders. But the actual development itself will be controlled and hold it, held by New Birth CDC. So they are your developer.
Okay, perfect. This is, will be an HOA community that you're asking for this phase one for... What's the percentage of renters that you'll be, rentals that you will be allowing in this development?
The phase one is 100% ownership.
And the rest of the phases?
Phase two is what we're still, is under development. And currently, what we have existing is, I would say, an 80/20 split.
Okay. And...
Eighty being ownership.
Okay, then, and you all have Director Calley? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Has the applicant satisfied the entryway, exit ways for the amount of developments that are going to be engaged in phase one? Or the...
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And we will bring back as soon as all the rezoning requests have been satisfied. A preliminary will have to be submitted before mayor and city council before development can move forward.
And that will have the definitive for most of the standards in terms of the entryways, exit ways around Woodrow Road within Laughterly Industrial? Okay. All right, Mayor Protem, I withdraw.
Thank you very much. In your presentation, and I've listened to them both with the ZBA as well as the planning commission, and it's been very, very impressive. And you seem to be at the right location to make this happen. We've listened to this at other spots that just didn't work for the location. One thing that we are concerned about is parking, and you mentioned it. But can you give us a little bit more detail about the availability of parking and perhaps your connection with public transit?
Sir, I'll have our engineer to speak to that, Mr. Tyrone Williams.
Yes, in the residential component, there's capacity for two parking off-site, off-street at each one of the residences. So that's roughly about 200 spaces. When we go over into the commercial development, there's also parking provided there. There's about an additional 400 spaces there. If there's any events or things that might be occurring at the community pavilion, there would be overflow parking at the adjacent parking at the New Birth Church. That's about a five to seven-minute walk. So it's not, it's not feasible that it could be done that way.
In terms of connection to public transit, is there anything already in the works? We'll deal with it as it comes.
We'll deal with that as it comes. Right now, just in terms of egress in and out of the site, just in terms of traffic movement, predominantly, all of the exits from this property would come out of onto Woodrow or onto Laughterly Industrial Boulevard. So the only anticipation that people would be going back toward Evans Mill is that they were going over there for some specific activity. The ease in egress would be best to go out and go back out Laughterly.
Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I would like to allow Jabar Herbert, who is one of our specialists that's on our team as well. One of the goals of our Board of Directors and of Dr. Bryant himself was for us to bring innovative technology to this development. And through our partnerships, we will be able to demonstrate that.
We're looking at the National Innovative Accessibility Grant to provide a shuttle service for the residents of the Stonecrest community as well as the new village project. So this would be an EV charge buses that would provide free shuttle service for members of this community. So that's being planned, and we're in the process following, you know, positive approval tonight to pursue some grants around funding that. Thank you. And this was being done, it's already been implemented in California, and we've been asked by the governor of New York to implement it there as well.
Very well. Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that National Innovative, what was the name of that grant? I'm sorry.
Accessibility.
Say the full name. I'm sorry.
The National Innovative Accessibility Grant.
Accessibility. Okay, thank you.
Right? Counselwoman Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The question I had is, well, actually, if you can elaborate on the single fam, not the single family, but the senior piece, the rental, how does, how is that going to work?
Well, there's several ways. It, seniors can also purchase. That's just to provide an option. So it would be based upon individuals that qualify. We haven't actually worked out all those details yet, but we would envision that it would be some sort of affordable that would work to allow them to accommodate the payment with some sort of subsidies. That's one of the things that we're looking at right now. I guess you can speak a little bit more about the subsidies that we're pursuing.
Counselwoman, would you like for me to go in?
Go. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. So, and speaking to the specifics of the senior housing, again, I don't want to sound like I'm beating the same drum, but we're looking at innovative ideas and opportunities. There's a project that has received national awards and recognition by allowing grandparents to be able to house their actual, is for grandparents. It's called grandparent housing for grandparents who actually have custody of their children. And this is one of the programs that we're looking to potentially implement in our development itself. We do not want to be, what many of the citizens of Stonecrest has shared with us previously, a developer that stands here and makes a lot of promises. So we are by no means being evasive. But when we're speaking to these things, I just want you to know this is what we're currently working towards. What we can tell you is that there will be senior housing. We're working to see if that senior housing will be subsidized to help grandparents or will it be for sale? But there will be senior housing in our development itself. Thank you.
And Counselor, just to quickly to add to that, one of the questions that came up from the community as it relates to the grandparent housing, as a part of that program, there is a component that allows for a transitionary period. So once you come to a point where your child is 18 years old, there is a formal process to help you transition out to find housing that would be suitable if that, if our development is not appropriated at that time.
Done?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Anyone else? Ms. Cowie? Summarize the conditions for us again? That's good.
The staff did recommend approval of the rezoning request and map amendment. Developers shall conduct a noise decibel or acoustic analysis test to ensure that amplified sounds are mitigated to an acceptable level so as to not cause unreasonable disturbance to the neighboring residential community. Establish maximum decibel levels at property boundaries. Developers shall maintain an undisturbed buffer between the proposed development and the adjacent community along the length of the property to help with mitigating sounds from the development build-out and amphitheater and limit the intensity and scales of uses closest to the developed residential communities. The developers shall submit a lighting plan to show that there will be no excess outdoor lighting or the creation of light pollution. And a construction mitigation plan shall be submitted and approved by the community development division's director, including limits on construction hours, dust control measures, and truck routing to minimize neighborhood disruption.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Madam City Clerk, if you'd be so kind as to read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia to rezone property located at 6370 Woodrow Road, parcel ID 1610601015 from our 100 residential medium lot, District 2 MU3, mixed-use, medium density district, to provide severity ability, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for an adoption and effective date, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, after hearing the reading of the ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem.
Counselwoman Graham.
I'm excited to motion to approve ordinance for AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road. Second. Stonecrest, Georgia, 30038. I second with excitement also.
Unreadiness.
Counselwoman, five, states your unreadiness, sir.
I just had one more question for the, for the development team. If it's, if it's allowed, but if there is, if a motion is already on the floor.
Now is the time.
All right then. I just wanted to know, what are some of the plans to keep the quality of the, of the neighborhood, of this, of this development continued throughout? So what are some of your plans, so what are some of your plans to ensure that this neighborhood continues to maintain the quality of what we take in today?
Okay, okay. We've had a number of internal discussions as to how to maintain that quality of the village. And again, this is going to be New Birth Village. And so as Ms. Colfield noted, this New Birth Missionary Baptist Church is not going anywhere. We're going to be intimately involved, and we anticipate the, a strong homeowners association being the leveraging point to make sure that the quality is ultimately maintained. And to keep in mind that even though this is going to be a separate development, it is not going to be divorced from the overall New Birth campus in terms of currently, you know, we have our own security that patrols the property. And currently, our current security does, you know, make a sweep around. And so we would anticipate that that obviously, you know, would continue. But in terms of the quality of the project, we would definitely be utilizing that through the homeowners association and an active participation through New Birth CDC.
All right, Mayor Protem, I withdraw my unreadiness.
Thank you very much. Counselor, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road. Any other unreadiness? And all of those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye opposed, and they start at District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four is aye, District five?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. AZ 25-0096370 Woodrow Road is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for the FY '26 proposed budget. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, hold on one second, y'all, for people exiting. Give them a couple of seconds to do that. Madam City Manager, proceed. Need some help with that? You got it? Okay.
I'm going to wait on communications to come and provide some assistance. Thank you. Mayor Protem and counsel and citizens of Stonecrest, it is my pleasure to bring to you the FY '26 proposed budget for the city of Stonecrest. This year, I want to do something a little bit non-traditional. I want to start at the end of my presentation. And by doing so, I want to recognize and thank all of our city employees, those who are in the room and those who are actively listening, listening to this presentation. I want to say thank you for your commitment and time, effort, talent that you have put into the city of Stonecrest and choosing this as your place of employment. I want to do that and recognize that we could not have done this budget presentation without a lot of talented individuals and hard work. So, what I'm going to present to you today is one of the most critical policy decisions that a council will make in any given calendar year. And it's going to serve as a roadmap to the future of Stonecrest. Putting together this budget was not only looking at available resources and looking at expenses, but it was more about looking at building a community and building a place that not only businesses, but our residents, stakeholders, visitors can be proud of. And as we have gone for the past three or four budget seasons, when we have talked about all of the major changes that we've had in all of the departments, this year is a little bit different because if you all recall, and for citizens and employees that were here three or four years ago, I came to you talking about the time it would take for us to become more stable. And I want to present this budget today, letting you know that we have finally got to that point on this roadmap. We have finally gotten to a point where the budgets are starting to stabilize. We've looked at revenue recovery. We've looked at all of the ways that we can look at other additional funding to put together budgets to put, to move this city forward. We've looked at all of the ways that we can attract and retain employees. So, that is very symbolic of what this budget is going to represent. The movement of the needle from where we were to where we are today. So, I just want to start by saying that and officially start my presentation at this point. But I did want to recognize all of our employees that played a part in this. Some of the key budget things in the budget plan for FY26. Fundamentally, one of the largest things to take note of is that there was no change in our millage rate this year for FY26. It is going to stay at, at 25. It is still 1.257, one of the lowest millage rates in the state and definitely in the region. And we will continue using, utilizing that and other funding sources to plan for our ongoing operations. We are looking at key initiatives, continuing to enhance our public safety measures, developing plans for our future city, city facilities, including our town center and botanical garden, looking at long, long-term planning for growth and sustainability, continuing to improve the quality of life through our infrastructure and park upgrades, and making Stonecrest a competitive and desirable employee through our increased benefit package and our competitive pay. Our FY26 budget plan includes an inclusive budget of $36.6 million. That is an 11.1 million general fund budget, a $12.7 million capital improvement program budget, hotel motel fund of 1.2 million, municipal court of 270,000, and our urban redevelopment that is $790,000. Key points in our revenue is looking at some of our largest revenue lines, which would be our taxes at 16.9, license and fees at 974,000, and general government at 465. You'll notice that our budget has grown in our general fund from the 17.5 million to 19 million. A lot of that is attributed to our, a significant increase in our insurance tax premium over the past year. Again, this is just a historical comparison from our FY25 amended budget to our FY26 proposed budget. And again, the largest increase in our revenue was from our insurance premium tax. Overall, our budget grew from 17.5 to 19.1, a percentage change of 9%. This is just a comparison of our capital improvement program revenue from FY25. I'm sorry, FY26. And that is the 12.7 million total. And I will go over, I have slides that will go over a breakdown of those costs. Also, looking at our general fund expenses by function. Our parks and recreation in FY25 was one of our, one of our largest departments. In F, in our FY25 budget adjustments, we made some adjustments and moved the facilities portion from parks and recreation and established it as a department that is underneath our administration. We also made some other administrative changes in our FY25 budget adjustment that will be reflected in the FY26 entire budget plan. When we look at our general fund expenditures, we have an overall 4.51 increase from what we had in FY25 amended. In our capital projects budget, we have resurfacing at $3 million, sidewalks at 1.02, infrastructure at 1.8, professional services at 850, our parks at 3.8, and our city center or town center at 2.1. Next, I'm going to go into our FY26 departmental summaries of each department. In our mayor and city council, we are recommending a increase in the travel line for the two budget retreats, one in the winter and one in the summer. We're also moving dues and fees from mayor and council to general operations to pay for citywide memberships and dues. We also looked at making the distinction between a district initiative and a reimbursement that is required by the charter as a budget line. In our city clerk's office, we are proposing to increase the education and training and also have a reduction in their dues and fees. We have also increased the software and service contracts line for our city clerk's office. They currently have two software that support their functions, one of them being for our municipal, our meetings, and also for currently next request that provides assistance with our open records request. In the city manager's budget, one of the major increases or one of the most significant increases is an increase to the initiative line of $25,000. Previously, our citizens academy was funded out of our ARPA funding. In FY26, this will come from the city manager's initiatives. In addition, our council has asked us to look at other ways to engage with our local school districts and our youth. We are in the process of creating a youth council program and, and also an internship program to allow high school and seniors, high school and college graduate, college students to have internship programs throughout the year, through, through their fall and winter breaks. This, this initiative line also provides for our Georgia Cities Week and also when we have coffee, coffee with a cop or any, or the other initiatives with our local DeKalb County Police Department. Most notably, for the FY26 budget, we are recommending a 5% COLA for all of our employees who have been employed and on payroll by October 1. This 5% COLA represents the fact that the city has not offered a cost of living increase in the previous three years since we brought over city employees. We also are recommending 100% employer-paid medical and 75% for all other options. We're also looking to fully fund the human resource assistant director position, which was a budget adjustment for the remainder of FY25. And then, we're also making recommendations in a change for our medical provider. In the internal auditor department, while we have funding for a FTE, we also have funding in that line for professional services in the event a vendor is selected for that, to perform those duties. And we will make the necessary adjustment at that time. In our information technology and GIS, we will continue to outsource, and we are in the final year of the professional services contract. We will also continue to upgrade computers, increase enhancements to our cybersecurity. As we upgrade the audio, audiovisual system here in the council chambers and our future municipal courtroom, we will relocate the existing audio/video equipment to Brownsville Recreation multipurpose rooms. Under administration, we have again moved our facilities to a standalone department. And we will initiate the replacement of our leased vehicles. We will also enhance security efforts by putting in additional enhancements as defined in the safety plan that was presented to us several years ago. We will also fully fund the facilities operation coordinator position. Underneath facilities, a portion, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, underneath general operations, there will be a increase to our general liability as we will have additional, some additional vehicles and additional equipment that we will need to ensure. This is also where there will be an increase in the dues and fees that we moved from the mayor and council for citywide memberships as DMA and some of our other citywide memberships and fees that we have. And we also made a reduction in postage from that particular department. In our communications department, we are seeking to reclassify a part-time audiovisual, audiovisual technician to a full-time audiovisual technician. In finance, during our FY25 budget adjustments, we made some funding changes through the remainder of FY25. And we expect to fully fund the revenue specialist 1, 2, and 3 positions, as well as the purchasing specialist 1, 2, and 3 positions. We are also looking to make a, a small increase to the line item for audit services. In public safety, we are looking for additional professional services to hire a consultant to assist with the, a transition plan until a director is hired. In engineering, we, we continue to outsource engineering, but it will be at a reduced level once we have a city, city employee as an engineer is hired. In municipal court, we have created a fund for non-departmental expenses and payments to other agencies. In economic development, our new economic development director has looked at the positions and is making a recommendation that I support to reclassify both the business retention and expansion program associate to economic development manager. And then also, it says, reclassify the economic development manager to economic development, but it should say the business retention and expansion and the, the two positions, both of them will have the same title. Is, I'm drawing a blank right now on the second position, but it's retention and expansion. They will both become economic development manager positions. Under community development, we have started the implementation, or will start the entire implementation for community development in FY26. And then, we'll also have funding in there to uh, look at the comprehensive work plan item G4-6, which is historic preservation. In our code enforcement, we have allocated funding so that all of our code enforcement officers can attend GATE training and become certified. In our building department, we are including funding to outsource the chief building official. And in land development, we did not have any substantial changes. In legal services, the service level will remain the same. In our parks and recreation, they have done an excellent job in providing many, many special events. And we are increasing this special events line and adding a summer programs line. And again, I wanted to note that our facilities was moved to a separate department during the FY25 budget adjustment. Now, moving to our capital improvement plan. Currently for FY26, there is a $3 million recommended for street resurfacing. In our transportation projects, we want to make sure that we have a funding set aside for any unforeseen or emergency projects at $400,000. Street lighting at $300,000. Sidewalk design, 300. Sidewalk construction at 900,000. And hill veil bridge design study at 300,000. We are continuing to work on various intersection improvements, including, starting with the construction of 800,000 for the Klondike and South Goddard intersection. And also having signal improvement match funds in the amount of $800,000. Additionally, we have recommended $230,000 for wayfinding signs and Bridgescape for Farrington and Miller Bridge. In some of the areas where we have had recent paving, we are also recommending bus paths, benches, and shelters in the amount of $150,000. In addition to the Panola Road project, the Phase 1, ensuring that we have $500,000. And for our city slash town center, 2.7 million dollars and SPOS management of $250,000. In our parks plan, through the remainder of this year, we anticipate being able to completion on a lot of our different projects that we've had for various parks. And the remaining improvements that are needed are listed here. Southwest, the fencing, fencing around the fields and gates at 150,000. We're currently looking at new scoreboards for our baseball fields at Brownsville, fencing with new gates and parking area resurfacing. In addition, we are also looking at Everett Park, looking at a feasibility study for, from the Parks Master Plan of 50,000 to look at additional parking, restrooms, a creation of an overlook, additional overlook opportunities and also additional trails. From the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, we still have additional funds to expand to the third-party, party management company, site improvements for Panola shows, and we are in progress with land acquisitions. In the Tree Bank Fund, we currently have $75,314. And the expenses for this will be determined by the tree preservation ordinance with oversight by our community development director. For hotel motel fund, we anticipate a revenue of 1.2 million dollars. And the anticipated expenses, a portion goes to our general fund in the amount of $450,000, $450,000 transferred to our capital improvement program of 225 and pay, payments to other agencies, which is our DMO of $525,000. As I mentioned before, our municipal court, all of the expenses that are not operational are outlined in this fund for professional services for our judges, our solicitor, public defender, probation services, security, and payments to other agencies. Our urban redevelopment agency fund gets rent from our tenants that we have located in this building. And then, all that we have located in this building, and then also from a transfer from the general fund to assist with the debt services principal and interest, professional services, repairs and maintenance, custodial, landscaping, pest control, and utilities. Mayor Protim, at this time, I have concluded the presentation. I know that the agenda item that was published has the entire lined budget for all of the funds that I have mentioned. And I will be available to answer any questions. And then we'll also, I just want to make note that we will post a copy of this presentation that is just a summary of what is being presented in the FY twenty six budget.
Thank you very much. Council, you have any questions or comments before we open the floor for public hearing?
Mayor Protim.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Uh, city manager, do you mind sending that one to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments or question before we open the floor for public hearing?
Mayor Protim.
Councilman Five.
I move to open the floor for public hearing for the FY twenty six proposed budget.
Second.
It's been proposed in second to open the floor for public hearing on the FY twenty six proposed budget. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye. Opposed, next, out of District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five. Motion carries five to zero. The floor is now open for public hearing on the FY twenty six budget, proposed budget. Madam City Clerk, do you have anyone who is signed up? Or is it just gonna? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and take it by the one who signed up first.
Dave Marcus.
Good evening, y'all. Dave Marcus, sixty-five oh one Rockland Road in the great District Five of Stonecrest. I'm neither for nor opposed, but I've got some questions about this budget. And I've just been looking at the general fund, not any of the capital improvements. Noticed a couple of things. First of all, quality of life in Stonecrest could well be defined by how the city does in economic development and public safety. I have the sense, walking around, talking to people, that these are the general, the general things that aren't missing in people's Stonecrest. And so I'm a little curious as to why, with economic development being so important, the budget is essentially flat between the original twenty twenty five budget and the proposed twenty twenty six. So that would be one question. What more are we going to get done? And as a subsidiary question, what is being done so that we don't end, say, next August with nobody working for the development, the economic development department, as happened this year, whether it was August or whatever that single weekend was, when everybody had left and nobody new had come? What's going to prevent that again? Because that obviously impedes efficiency. Second, public safety. We are spending or proposing to spend about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on it. How is that spend going to make your lives, my life, everybody in this room's lives, a little safer in the year that's coming up? Where's the money going? Quarter of a million, year in, year out? I do not see public safety funded by the city in Stonecrest in a way that is visible to residents. At the same time, when you combine parks rec and cultural with facilities and general operation, and I'm combining them in my head because duties have been moved between them, the increase in the operating budget is nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I don't have a clear sense of where that's going to, but it seems like a lot, again, compared to not spending anything more on public safety, anything more on economic development. General administration is up twenty-three percent, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And I don't know exactly what that is, but it just seems, in a tight economy, in a tightly budgeted city, that I'm not sure that the number one priorities are getting what they should. And I'm not sure whether or not some other things that perhaps could have belts tightened, don't. The second thing I'd like to ask is that the citizens be presented with a list of the projects in the comp plan that were slated for twenty-five, fiscal twenty-five and fiscal twenty-six. And let us know which ones are going to be indeed done to the point that they should be by the end of twenty-six, and which ones, for that matter, in twenty-five that were promised have been deprioritized or had their timelines changed for the future. And the last request is for the two-point, I want to say seven million for city center. What are we getting from that? When will a city center or town center be open, be operative? What are the plans? I know that the city does not want to reveal the plan that the consultant created about three years ago. But if you all could give us some idea of what you're going to deliver, all we have are four words, city center slash town center. And that can cover a whole range of evil and goodness. And I think you should give people the chance to review plans and take a look and see how it matches each individual's needs or what they want, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Say, anyone else speaking? I guess would be in favor of the proposed budget. Anyone else speaking in favor of the proposed twenty twenty-six budget? Anyone else speaking in favor of the proposed twenty twenty-six budget? Hearing none? Anyone speaking in opposition to the proposed twenty twenty-six budget? Do you get to speak on both sides? Madam City Clerk, what's the, repeat the rules? One quick comment.
Please, find a quarter of a million dollars, stick it in a fund, reserve it for transparency initiatives. So that when somebody comes up with some good ideas that the city actually wants to implicate, unimplicate, wants to do for transparency, nobody can say there's no money. You just transfer it from that account to transparency. I don't know what's buried in here as sub-line items for transparency, but it certainly has not been discussed, yet it is one of the key things that's being talked about, at least in certain district campaigns.
Right. You got a chance to bite from both sides of the apple. And we're going to have to deal with that. So some people come to the podium and say they don't know what they are far against, and I don't think we have a in-between category. Anyone else speaking in opposition to the FY twenty-six budget proposal? Hearing none? Council will entertain a motion to close public hearing on the FY, proposed FY twenty-six budget.
Mayor Protim.
Councilman.
Go ahead.
Councilman Five.
I have a question. Does this mean that the city manager able to use time to rebut during the, during the fore? Since this is a public hearing?
I'm not sure, so let's all for it. Madam City Manager, you choose to rebut anything that's been said?
I don't necessarily want to rebut. What I would like to do is say thank Dave Marcus for his questions and let him know that when we, this is just the initial presentation of the budget. When we also will, on November the tenth, have a work session and do a deeper dive, can do a deeper dive into some of these specific line items that he is referring to. The council and staff recognize public safety as one of the major, 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 major things for the city of Stonecrest, especially as it relates to our businesses, but also our, just our homeowners and our residents. So we are looking to, we are working with DeKalb County to the degree that we can to make changes, to look at some other ways that we can utilize what we currently have with our IGA with them. We're also looking at some increased utilization of cameras and other technology to assist the city of Stonecrest in those efforts with DeKalb County. We are very aware of the negative impact that it can have on our economic development. And while we have, the city has not, to date, publicly announced a location and/or plans for a city or town center. Those are being worked out, and there may be some additional announcements in the future, in the very near future. Our comprehensive plan, our projects for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, we do have those. I believe they should be listed online. We likely are getting to the point where we need to make some quarterly updates on those. But we'll certainly single those out when we get ready to make the final proposed budget presentation on the November council meeting. In terms of transparency, we have talked about, you know, providing monthly reports, staff, myself, available to answer any questions. But also, we have been working very hard as we have transitioned to the new software. One of the things that our finance department is looking at is having additional software that will allow a public view into transactions. And then we're also working to streamline some of those additional processes with our vendors to allow them to see where their transactions are, doing the same thing in our, on the community development side. And then also, one of the huge things that we're working on is, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have another communications director whose sole purpose is going to be telling our story. And part of that story is looking at the things that we do. The staff is doing a lot of work, and we need to be able to tell that story and share that story. And then also, just from a historical perspective, to let our residents and citizens know the work that is being done. And some of it is behind the scenes work, but that we are very transparent, want to continue to be transparent and looking at ways to move the city forward. But we are very aware of the quality of life. We hear it, we understand it, from our code enforcement, to our facilities, to all of our support staff, they understand the commitment that is, that is there and the Stonecrest standard that we're seeking. And we understand that it does start with public safety, and we are looking very hard at what we can do to move that forward and look at a transition plan for the city of Stonecrest. And a lot of that rests with our council and how they want to move forward. So we, we as staff certainly support that. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. And since we do have four weeks before we consider adoption of the budget, we'll all get a chance to rebut or add to our concerns and make corrections and just get a better understanding as to what's being proposed. All right? I'm sorry?
Mayor Protim, I would like to move to close the floor for public hearing.
It's been proposed in second to close public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-six budget. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye. Opposed, next, out of District One. District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-six budget is now closed. Council, you have additional questions or comments?
Mayor Protim.
Councilman Five.
Okay, so first off, City Manager Scruggs, just wanted, again, echo your thought, echo your thanks to both our city staff and city residents for being so patient as we have gotten through this process. Again, I know, especially to you and your staff, you and the mayor's office have worked very diligently to honor most of the requests from both the citizens, from the city council, but also your respective goals and initiatives in our comprehensive plan to make this, going to pull that away because I keep pumping it, to make sure, to make sure that this budget reflects the goals and visions of the city. So first off, thank you for that. I have a few questions on a couple of things in the budget. So first off, I wanted to ask about the internal auditor. The sixty-five thousand that we have for both external services, given that we are, given some of the plans we've made and some of the changes we've made with the charter, are we sure that sixty-five thousand will be sufficient to get us through the, get us through the fiscal year?
Councilman Five, what we did for FY twenty-six is very similar to what we did in twenty-five. Because we have not identified whether that is going to be a FTE or a vendor, we split the line, if you will, and put a half of it to professional services and the other to the salary and benefits line. Once that determination is made and/or selection is made, we'll make the necessary adjustments.
Okay.
I didn't want to put it in either so that it would insinuate that staff is trying to influence whether it's one or the other. Wanted to be transparent with that.
I appreciate that. So if that comes, you'll, if that comes and a person comes with a contract, you'll just bring it back to council, and then we'll be able to adjust from, to pull from one or the other?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that works. And so on that, I wanted to also ask regarding communications. The City Magazine, will that be coming from, because it's coming out this year, will that be coming from the FY twenty-five or FY twenty-six budget?
Staff is, the staff that we do have is working, has been working on that. We do anticipate having a communications director here in the near future. And I will defer to them in terms of, is that, if that is ready to publish this year or not?
Okay. End of it, but depending on the timing, which, will it be still able to be pulled out of FY twenty-five or FY twenty-six?
It depends on how far we are with it at the end of the year. The city staff has been working on it, but again, I want to defer that to the communications director.
Okay. And alongside with that, are there any budget necessary for newsletter?
I think the budget currently reflects that.
And then so, can we, and I just have a friendly amendment. For engineering, are we, can we amend engineering to take out public works and just make it engineering rather than public work slash engineering? We don't have a public works, I'm always confused. I don't believe we have a public works department.
We, we do not, but I believe the, when we did the FY twenty-five, I believe the chart, I'm sorry, the code has it listed as public works. And engineering is under public works.
Gotcha. So well, that's a, so we, that's an us adjustment. And council would have to make that adjustment.
That's your pleasure, to remove that.
All right then, thank you so much. With the public work, with the, I saw that we moved some of the professional services expense line under engineering and kind of took from that. Knowing that we have, that we did make some adjustments last, not adjustments, that we did pass the abate, the nuisance abatement, and said that we wanted to use professional services out of engineering, that fifty-six, that five hundred and six, that five hundred and sixty thousand change, is that sufficient to get us through the next year?
I do believe that it is. We also, there is some additional fund, there is funding that I have been made aware of through the county to assist with abatements. They have a program for that.
Oh, that, and so we'll be able to, do we have to get an IGA with that, or is that?
They, through their planning and sustainability, I have been told that they have a, a program that will assist us with those.
That's good. I like that. Okay. And then finally, I'm just gonna, I want to say thank you for, again, thinking of including Hill and Dale Bridge, excuse me, Hill Vale Bridge as a part of that, that capital improvements budget. I'm going to reiterate my support and my request for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a twenty percent match, just to go along with that. I understand that that, but that three hundred thousand, as we requested, is a part of the design. But the one hundred and sixty would cover actual, be able, for us to be able to have a match grant to go for federal, or go for. to go for federal, go for federal and state grants to be able to apply towards that. I understand that where I asked for it might be a little bit, might run into some bumps and if council has an issue with that, you know, welcome to, welcome to have that discussion. But I don't want us to fund the design and then have to wait till SPOLOST 3, if that, if that does occur in 2030, to be able to fund a design for that, I mean, the actual construction. So I will just reiterate, reiterate my request for that 160 in that capital improvement project.
Yes, sir.
All right then, and with that, Mayor Protem, oh, and thank you so much for the 5% COLA for our employees. That is so, so apparent. Thank you so much for doing that. And I, we have, I know we reiterated that support back during our FY, during our FY25 budget retreat last year. You took that feedback and we appreciate, and I know that the employees appreciate enough. And so the most that we can do to help our employees, I know that we, this council thanked you for that. And Mayor Protem, I withdraw.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Adam, City Manager, you made a wonderful presentation. And at my pace, I would love to have had it before the meeting so I could have followed along a little bit closer, you know, with my notes in the margin. And so, other than that, you know, great presentation. And soon as I can get a chance to look at it, I'll probably have some additional comments. And let me just say, the cost of living that we just discussed there, how does that put us in terms of the rest of the market, in terms of our salaries?
Mayor Protem, if you recall, when we did the compensation study back in '23, that data was from '21 and '22. And at that time, we led the market. Since that time, there have been several other municipalities that did the same thing and essentially moved the, the line, if you will. We do believe that the COLA puts us in a competitive stance for Metro Atlanta. One of the other things that we are looking at in our human resources department is to have a review of the comprehensive plan, not, I mean, I'm sorry, compensation plan, not a total, but just a review, just to make sure that we're still competitive with the region.
Just want to make sure we're keeping up and we're not being too aggressive at the same time. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. An issue I brought up before, and that is the audits, the internal audits that we're, well, the external audits that we're getting done. Now, once they're complete, that will qualify us for the LMIG funding. And I look at our $3 million resurfacing program. Will those funds, and we're looking at, what, two or three pots, maybe three pots? Will they be applied toward resurfacing? Are they earmarked for anything in particular? I was under the impression that it was mostly for roads that LMIG was qualified. So would that put additional funds in our resurfacing line?
That is what LMIG is designed for.
Okay. So, and I'm hoping that we will catch up in 2026 with our auditing. That being the case, we can somewhat count on an additional million, million and a half, maybe, that can be used for resurfacing.
Yes, sir. Since the last time we met, I do have an update. I, I hope that I'm not premature in saying this, but we do have an update. We are getting to the final things that are needed to close out the '22 audit and we hope to have that completed in the next couple of weeks. And so we'll have that completed before the end of the year, definitely before the end of the year, hopefully the next couple of weeks. But we do have movement since the last time we met.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the $3 million for resurfacing and I'm trying to find a way to up it if we can without going in other directions. So if that's gonna come out of LMIG, that could give us another million or so once we get them all completed and we're counting being up to date in FY26.
We're, we're getting really close. With the, when we receive those grants, and I'm looking at Finance Director, I believe we do bring those back to council to accept the funding. So at that time, you all will be made aware and then you can also at that time determine allocation.
I'm ready to pre-accept, but yes, that's good. And that's it for now. I'll take other questions up at our next meeting on the 10th. Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, thank you. Just a couple of things. If there's anybody out there in D5 that has any questions about this, if you don't want to send it directly to the city, please send it to me so that I can understand what you are asking for. It may be some of the same questions that I might have as well. Second thing, thank you for the audit update because that was going to be something that I was gonna bring up, but I do have one question about the LMIG. With the LMIG, do we have only one option of use in terms of paving or can we use it for something else other than just resurfacing? City Manager? I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Grimes, I believe that it is for those transportation resurfacing related projects, but I will get back with our team and get, and get a definitive answer for you on that.
Okay. And then second thing about that, once we get the 20, oh, do we have to wait and get all of the backlog LMIGs at the same time? Do we have to be completely caught up with all of the audits or can we get what would have been for '22, we can get that?
Yes, ma'am. As we complete those, the funding will be released for that particular year.
Sounds good, okay. Those are my two questions, thank you.
And keep in mind, we have a work session on November 10 that we can get additional questions satisfied. And the City Manager will make herself available at any point in time to deal with this matter. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves? On this chair, when is your meeting?
29th, but it's not on our weekly calendar of events. I've requested that from our constituent services support, but I've not gotten that answer back yet for the committee meeting. I don't see it on, I don't see it on our weekly events and I thought it was the 29th. Okay. We'll get that answer, Councilwoman Graves, we'll get that answer, as soon as we get that answer.
Your mic, your mic, your mic.
Can we go over as the suggestion of why we increase or decrease a line budget, a line item?
Yes, would you, is there a threat, is there a?
Well, it's just a couple.
In the event to go, I just, I'd rather have a threshold, if you will, or a base, like if it's, whatever the variant, the percentage of the variance is, so that we're not going through all of them. But if you would like to, I don't mind. But if you would just say, if, you know, if it's over, you know, 5%, 10% or if it's over a certain dollar amount, then we'll go over those.
Hey, the ones that I'm concerned with, I'll send you an email?
Okay, perfect.
We can talk about it in the finance meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This item was for discussion and we'll have at least two more opportunities to discuss this before we vote on it. So unless there are other questions?
Mayor Protem?
Councilman 5?
And City Manager, just for our wonderful public, where can they find your awesome presentation that you made tonight, after you unposted?
We will put it online where the budget currently is and then I believe I can, I believe the clerk's office may be able to add it to the meeting.
Packet?
The packet, uh-huh, another line underneath it, I think they may be able to.
And I know this might be, and I don't, well, I don't want to direct city operations, but is it possible that we also do something on social media just to give people another avenue to be able to be notified that it is budget season and this is where they can see it? I think that you've done a good job on that presentation and our residents deserve, deserve, not deserve, excuse me, it deserves its recognition. So is there a way we can get it on social to be able to say, hey, are you interested in learning about the city budget? Can we get that on, can we try to post it somewhere?
Yes, I'll get it, our communications team, I'm sure they hear me as we speak.
That works, thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
We have some clarity. The next finance committee meeting is on November the 19th, November the 19th.
And the tips?
And the tips meeting is on November the 12th.
You'll get three opportunities to add to this, so we will be.
No, you won't.
Discuss by the 24th. Okay. Nothing else on this matter, then we'll move to the next item as consent agenda. We have nothing, appointments and announcements, we have none, reports and presentation. Ms. Scruggs will talk to us about the Mammoth Sunflower Challenge Weiner.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Now drumroll?
I have a presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to be able to show.
All right, here we go.
There we go. So back in April, the city launched a challenge inviting residents across Stonecrest to participate in our Mammoth Sunflower Challenge. Each household was provided a complimentary seed packet and city staff engaged residents in every district to promote this community involvement. I am, oh, I went too fast, hold on, I'm excited. I want to announce that our winner for our tallest sunflower seed award is Mr. Randy Anderson. He had a height of 10 feet and he is in District 5.
All right.
And next, we have the largest sunflower head. The winner for that is Ms. Lydia Schofield and hers was a diameter of 10 inches across and she too was in District 5. And so the district with the most blooming sunflowers is none other than District 5.
All right.
District 5 had a total of 12 blooming flowers and we want to thank the 80 residents who joined in on this challenge. Together, we grew more than just flowers. We grew our community with joy and connection and we look forward to next year. So thank you to all our winners and thank you to District 5.
Congratulations, District 5, congratulations to the winners.
Mayor Protem?
And Mr. Anderson, if you'll come up front, please.
And Councilwoman Grimes?
Yes, I'm just wondering, where's our naturalist? Where's Sheldon?
He is not here this evening, but Sheldon did an absolute incredible job by going out, engaging in the community. Him as well as Nicholas went out as well and we just certainly thanked them. Our Arbus, I'm not sure, I know he came in.
He is.
While we got, no, I'm saying came in, I'm not sure if he was involved in the challenge or not, but we certainly want to thank them as well for, for them going out looking and being judges, if you will, so.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I'm coming down.
That sunflower tree. How did you keep the deal? Yeah. District 5, enjoy your moment.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
There you go. Got a it's a pack of you got a pack of roasted sunflower seeds in there. That's great, thanks again. Next on the, on the agenda is on the old business for decision, a resolution for the new medical health insurance provider. We had a rather extensive presentation at the work session and I think it was well discussed and y'all should be ready.
30 seconds. Good evening, Council.
Evening.
Before you this evening, for decision is the recommendation to transition from our current medical provider, which is Anthem, to Kaiser Permanente effective January 1st, 2026. Please keep in mind that open enrollment starts November 1st, which is this Saturday through the 15th. I do have our reps from Kaiser Permanente here if you have any questions or concerns that I am unable to answer for you at this time. Mayor Protem, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments?
Mayor Protem?
Councilman 5?
Were we, I know that, and thank you so much, Mr., for Ms. Durden for bringing this, again, to council. Were we able to get the savings that we anticipated from the switch? Oh, wait, never mind, never mind, just remembered, I withdraw my question.
All right. Anyone else? Here is none. Madam City Clerk, you have a resolution to read?
A resolution by the mayor and city council of the City of Stonecrest to approve Kaiser Permanente as the medical benefits provider for the City of Stonecrest to adopt the workforce health engagement plan to repeal conflicting resolutions to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Thank you very much, Council. After hearing the reason of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
I make motion that we approve the resolution for a new medical health insurance provider, Kaiser Permanente. Second?
It's been properly moved in second to approve the resolution for the new health insurance provider, Kaiser Permanente. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion was signify by saying aye. Opposeds, say no to District 1. District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4, aye. District 5?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We have a new medical health insurance provider.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is on the new business for decision, vendor recommendation for the purchase and installation of gazebo at Salem Park and Farrington Park. Ms. Boynton and Harry?
Good afternoon, hotel mayor, council, city manager, legal, city clerk. Tanisha Boynton?
Is your, is your mic on there?
Yes, it is. I need to lean in a little bit more. Tanisha Boynton, procurement manager. I'm here this evening to bring a recommendation for the purchase and installation of gazebos at Salem Park and Farrington Park. The solicitation went on on June, July 8th. It was solicited to 758 vendors. Out of that, we received six proposals or six bid responses. Let me see. Collins General Construction LLC was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So I am before council seeking approval for our recommendation to award to Collins General Constructions LLC. I spoke with legal, I think we have a contract that we are working on. So we are asking also for the mayor and the city clerk to be authorized to execute that contract once we receive it back from the vendor.
Okay.
Any questions?
Council?
Mayor Protem?
Councilman 5?
And I'm trying to pull up and City Manager, if you could, well, City Manager and Finance Director Gaines, if you could cop in with me for a moment. Where's this funding coming from for both Salem and Farrington? I know we're saying it's out of SPOLOST, but which specific lines out of capital improvements? I know we're saying it's out of SPOST, but which specific lines add to capital improvements?
Did you, were you looking, were you looking for the actual GL line?
Y- yes, uh, we allocated sixty thousand for the gazebo for Farrington, and, um, at least what I'm seeing in the FY twenty-five. Um, but I'm, I'm not seeing where the, uh, that's why I'm thinking I might be missing something, because I'm not seeing where we have one seventy-nine for it.
The one seventy-nine is not to exceed that amount. I don't, that's not the actual amount. Um, yes, so I guess we're asking for additional funds, but the GL line is, uh, three hundred, one-five-seven-five, five-four, one-five-one-zero.
So, uh, the, not the exact, exact line, but we, so, and maybe that's why, why I'm trying to get the clarification. So, in our FY twenty-five budget, we have sixty thousand allocated for gazebo for Farrington, and then the similar amount in Salem, and I'm, that's what I'm seeing out of the budget packet that we passed last year. Um, so, I'm asking, where's that, that extra dollars?
Are we able to, um, get back with you and provide that information?
Councilman Five, I believe the remainder actually is coming from the ARPA funding.
So, we'll be pulling-
S- SPOST and, um, the one for Farrington is actually coming from, uh, ARPA funding.
And if I may, if we're gonna move, um, funding from fund to fund, we'll just have to have that, um, in the resolution.
Okay.
So, for clarification, we have sixty, we're gonna pull sixty thousand from Fair, for, from Farrington Park to pay for the Farrington Park gazebo. Sixty thousand out of the Everett Park line to pull for, for that gazebo. Well, I'm not even-
Everett Park.
Not Everett? I'm so sorry, I am. Salem, Salem Park. Apologies, y'all. Um, for the Salem Park gazebo, for the Salem Park gazebo, we're pulling the sixty thousand out of that. That's a hundred and twenty thousand. Where specifically did we allocate out of ARPA to pay for that rest of that, rest of the amount?
Um, we did, uh, adjustments, I believe, at the end of twenty-four, and had, um, park improvements, and the gazebo was included in that.
That was in the, um, and that was in the final meeting in twenty-four?
Yes, sir. And also the, um, fencing at Farrington, because we were trying to get the additional funding so that we could finish up Farrington Park.
Okay, then, so, effectively, we're gonna be able to, and so, tonight, we're gonna have to put out, so, do we have a resolution on the debt to transfer that money over?
I don't, I will defer to Legal.
No, but that's also, um, if the city plans on just spending that full amount, are you, do you plan paying for that full amount from ARPA and?
No, it's split.
It's, okay, you do have to move, okay.
Are we able to switch our, in those two funds, because it's federal and county, are they, well, it's federal and city, is, are we able to, to split them, put those together, or split them?
To split them, yes.
Okay. Then will we have to defer this item?
No, sir. Um, we are able to separately bill, one from the SPOST fund and one from the ARPA's fund, excuse me, fund, but to co-mingle the funds, that is not what we can do.
Okay, so, and then that brings me back to the original question about the one for, about how much, how are we gonna pay for the, give, and give me one second, I just want to make sure I have this right. The one hundred and forty-nine, and forty-nine thousand, or whatever, or whatever the, um, amount is, give me, um, without having that full amount, so, what would be, so, we're effectively going to pull it out of, pull part of it out of ARPA, and then pay for, and pay for the rest of it out of the, um, out of the, um, SPOST?
Yes, sir, you can pay in invoice with multiple GL line.
Okay.
Sir.
Are we, are we, are we able to do that tonight without the resolution?
So, I was assuming that we were, um, moving the money to be on one GL line to pay for the entire project, but what I'm hearing, the project sits in two different funds, and you're gonna be paying a part of it from one fund and a part of it from, from another, so in that case, I don't think you have to move funds.
Okay. This item has been, uh, discussed before, and I believe we had resolved any concerns in that, uh, regard, but let us, uh, understand it, just that we don't, make a move that we don't need to make, but I think, uh, we have resolved it to the point that we were ready to move forward, and in fact, it's well overdue.
Yes, Mayor Protem, so the sixty thousand out of the line for Salem, and the line for Farrington, the remainder is coming from ARPA. So, the one seventy-nine minus sixty, the sixty is coming from SPOST or Capital Projects, and the, the remainder of that is coming from ARPA.
Okay.
Within ten thousand, whatever.
Yeah, exactly, you know, I thought we had already covered this in previous discussions about it, and, uh, this has been on the agenda for, uh, two years. Yeah, and I think you have it, uh, right by now. Okay, any other questions, sir?
Um-
On the floor.
I will, I will withdraw the floor now, just to make sure I have what I'm saying correct.
Okay, anyone else? Here in None, Council, you have this, uh, item before you, as the vendor recommendation, and I will seek an approval of, um, Collins General Construction LLC bid. What is your pleasure?
One more question, uh, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Five.
Where's, um, City Manager Scruggs, where, what is gonna happen to that sixty thousand that's, um, leftover fund Farrington Park, in Farrington Park?
It's not sixty thousand left over in Farrington. That's the portion that is coming from ARPA. There is not a, I don't believe there is a line.
It's, it, um, I see under SPOST one, we ha, I see under SPOST one, we have sixty thousand allocated for Farrington Park.
Um, give me just one moment.
Oh, I'm seeing it. It's in ARPA twenty-one. Alright, my apologies.
Okay.
Alright, I withdraw.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Washington?
I move that we, um, accept the decision for the vendor recommendation for the purchase and the installation of the gazebos at Salem Park and Farrington Park.
Second.
This is been properly moved in second to accept the decision, uh, approve the vendor recommendation for the purchase and installation of gazebos at Salem Park and Farrington Park. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye opposed, this next on our District One. District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The vendor recommendation is approved. Next item on the agenda is for decision, uh, vendor recommendation for Gateway Monument and Park Identification signage. Uh, Ms. Boynton and, uh, and Harry.
Yes, um, Procurement, uh, released a solicitation on July, um, eighteen, twenty-twenty-five. It was released to four hundred and forty-eight vendors. Out of that, we received three responses. Wright Light Signs Inc. was the lowest responsible responsive bidder. Um, we are recommending the award, um, to Wright Light Signs Inc. in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, again, we're speaking with Legal. They advised that a contract is needed for this. So, we, um, the contract has been sent to the vendor. We're waiting for that to come back, and we're also asking for, um, the mayor, authorization for the mayor and city clerk to, um, execute the contract with this vendor.
I'm gonna ask you to repeat that last statement now.
We're asking authorization for the mayor and the city clerk to, um, execute a contract, um, with the, with the vendor, the recommended vendor.
Okay, so what actions are you requesting from Council?
Just, um, approval of my recommendation to award.
Alright, got you. Okay, I was a little confused at that last statement.
Mayor Protem?
Um, are you finished? Okay, Council?
I'm sorry, Ms. Boynton, the last statement you said, you were recommending mayor and city clerk, not city manager?
Because of the dollar amount, so the mayor has to, um, execute the contract with the vendor.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments from Council? Here in None?
Mayor Protem.
Councilman Five?
I am sorry, but the record that it's gonna be funded through the wayfinding, um, funds that we have available.
Alright, Councilman Five?
Um, is, is Harry present? Um, Harry, when we do this work, um, for the sign, for the Gateway Monument, um, on Pinola Shoals, that's not gonna interfere with the work we have going on right there now, right?
No, sir, the, it'll, it'll replace the existing sign, so it'll be close to the-
It'll be out of the way? They, it won't interfere with what they got going on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's it. Mayor Protem, I withdraw.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, I have one more question.
Councilwoman Grimes?
I'm sorry, uh, I, I, this is for everybody who has a part in this. In the event, when things are approved here, are we, mm-mm, mm-mm, it's not a question, it's a statement. Can we please consider how long it takes for things to be approved here, and we start to see things actually moved? I'm not saying that there's a delay, but I just want to make sure we all understand that. We just don't want it to be a delay. I'm ready to see stuff come up out of the ground, and these wayfinding signs I have been so excited about for so long. So, I think this is the reason why I'm saying it on this one. Please, 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 whatever route we can take to make sure that there's no delay from here to there, to the ground, to come up with our vendors, please let's do that. Now, I'm not saying that that's not happening. Well, sometimes I am a little concerned, but that's what I'm saying tonight, please. Thank you.
Very well, um, Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor Protem, um, just to respond to Councilwoman Grimes, um, I believe we have, um, may have a timeframe in, in this one, and if we don't, um, I, I think that that could be something that's discussed, but a lot of, uh, sometimes, once we get it here before Council, um, the delay obviously would be in any conditions that would change during the course of, of the time of approval and con, uh, contract or the PO getting to the vendor. Um, but typically, in most of our contracts, we have a timeframe for them to complete projects. Um, sometimes through things that are, um, not of our own, and sometimes those things can be delayed, but rest assured that all the things that you all approve, um, we worked until, we work until the end, until we get those, um, up. I also want to say that this Gateway and my, uh, wayfinding sign project goes along with some of the things that we have in our comprehensive plan, um, that dictates, well, that dictate to staff that we needed to work on this, so this is one of the things that we'll be able to, um, uh, provide an update on, so thank you to staff for that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here in None, uh, you have a vendor recommendation for Gateway Monument and Park Identification signage? Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
Excited again. I make motion that we approve the vendor recommendation for Gateway Monument and Park Identification signage.
Second.
This is been properly moved in second to approve the vendor recommendation for Gateway Monument and Park Identification signage. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye opposed, this next on our District One.
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Wright Light Signs Inc. is approved for this work. Thank you very much, Ms. Boynton.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is from the city attorneys, comments.
No comments, just either.
No comments. City Manager, update.
Uh, Mayor Protem, I don't have, um, anything else to update. I do want to say to our Parks Department, thank you for the wonderful event that they had on last, uh, Friday.
My, that's my-
Oh, that was yours, I do apologize, but they are just doing an awesome job in, um, preventing, uh, presenting, um, very creative events for our community engagement, get, to engage in, and I'm just so thankful to have such talented staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Council, uh, District One?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I heard the event on Friday was great as well, and I did miss it, but I did see the video of the Thriller performance, so that was, that was really good. Um, District One, um, I wanted to announce that Veterans Day is November, so we, District Three and District One has partnered with Bojangles on Winter Hill and Pinola Road to celebrate our veterans, so the first one hundred veterans will receive a complimentary breakfast. Please stop by and say hello, and allow us to thank you for your service. Um, Halloween is this Friday, so I'm asking that everybody stay safe, and please, 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 do not go out alone, and be mindful of your surroundings. Another reminder is, um, to go out and exercise your right to vote. I think this Friday ends, um, early voting, so please, please, if you don't make the early voting, to go out this Tuesday and exercise your right. Um, I also gotta go out and vote, so please, please go out and vote. And I hosted a HOA community, um, meeting for District One. Out of all the subdivisions in District One, I had about six subdivisions to participate. Um, I'm looking forward to having more to come out and participate, so we can get an idea of the concerns that you're having in your subdivision, um, just to kind of talk about it, and to see how we can help or assist, and also make sure we're doing our part, or I'm doing my part in District One. Um, the next meeting I'm hoping to host in December, along with the quarterly town hall meeting that we host here at City Hall. The next event is gonna be on December thirteenth, from one-thirty to three, along with our hazardous waste that we're doing. That will be the last one for the year, so that will be a great time to do some end-of-year cleanup, and, um, come out to, I believe the waste dumpster would be located at the Farrington Park location. Um, so we're trying to rotate between Farrington Park and City Hall. So, that event also will happen on December the thirteenth. Outside of that, I think that's all I have, so I will go ahead and yield.
Thank you very much. District Two?
CNS District One will be also exercising her right to vote. I will yield my comments.
Thank you. District Three?
Um, I'd like to thank, uh, my sponsor partner Walmart, the manager, Mr. Randy Blaine, and all my partners from Feet on the Street Ministry, Pastor Lattimore, for supplying showers to, uh, almost fifteen, uh, of our unhoused residents, and also, um, giving them toiletries, and Walmart, which is simply the best. They, uh, provided clothing, uh, clean undergarments, socks, and, uh, food. Uh, they even pulled out the grill and barbecued some hot dogs. Um, we also had six homeless, um, gentlemen to get haircuts from our, uh, Ms. Sandy from the beauty shop inside of Walmart. Mason Hot Dogs also donated hot dogs frontline, provided information with the, with the Department of Community Affairs on how to help how our unhoused can get emergency housing. Also want to thank the Cab Police Department with, uh, Donae Weber, who provided other- Also wanna thank the cab police department with uh Danae Weber who provided other resources needed for the unhoused residents. I wanna say a special thank you also to my task force team, uh Shawanda Qualley of Planning and Zoning, Shanita Hampton and Frank of the Code Enforcement, thank you, I couldn't have done it without them. And I don't wanna leave out my Stonecrest staff, thank you all. This event provided essential love, first, support, respect, hope and dignity, dignity to each individual. We served at least fifty or more individuals who were facing insecurities and I thank again uh for everyone for the Stonecrest Unhoused event. And I also wanna uh remind people of the trunk or treat that we're having this Friday. Um, we want you, if you want to, I would love to have anyone that is interested in coming and popping their trunk with candy to help pass out candy to our, to our kids over off of Farrington Road, we're gonna be at Farrington Park from six o'clock to eight o'clock. And so I would love for you to come and be a part of that, we're gonna help them have a nice night of fun, thank you.
Thank you, D five.
We keep it live in D five, thank you to um the voters in D five who have already gone out to early vote, if you have not, please make sure you do so on election day, it's your right. Uh, we'll have at Salem Middle School to recognize the vets who are not only at our school, but are family members of the scholars that we serve on November eleventh at nine thirty AM at our school. Um, you'll be getting a, a real invitation soon, but if there's anybody in the community who would like to be a part of that celebration, please get in touch with me, I am tgrimes@stonecrestga.gov four seven zero four five six zero zero six six. If you're in Stonecrest, you can come and celebrate with us on November the eleventh. Um, also, on the books right now, we do have, again, the um uh Talk with Tammy, I, I don't call it a town hall, it's just a Talk with Tammy. Um, the last one for this, this year would be on December the eleventh. Um, that's tentative, December the eleventh, we have it on the books, if anything changes, you know, I'll let you know. But thanks again for um making sure you exercise your right to vote.
Thank you very much. Ever since in district four, Salem Park has really, really transformed the neighborhood, so to speak. Um, not just for the special event we had on last Friday, which was incredible, I only spent a short time there, but it was well attended, entertainment was spectacular and I think the people really, really enjoyed themselves. Uh, but I stopped by on the weekend, two weekends ago and the park had close to a hundred people in it, just on a regular day. And uh, um, that's what's gonna make the city great, is that repetition of great events, creating memories that they can tell other folks about and makes Stonecrest a destination. Uh, Brown's Mill is already becoming that, so we appreciate what's happening at Brown's Mill and we're expanding and uh Pinola Shows. We can't wait to get it back online to what it used to be because it was getting so much attention. And uh, whatever it takes to get us squared away at Pinola Show, Shows on that end of the city and that end of the county, it is bringing attention to Stonecrest in a very positive way and that's what we want. Folks who have a reason to come to Stonecrest and they can find here that they can find here what they can find no place else. So keep up the good work and uh we're proud of it. Given that, that is public, is uh council comments. And one other question, is there a need for public, a need for executive session? Yes, there is, there's a need for one for litigation.
Mayor Protem.
Councilman Five.
I move to, I move for council to enter executive session to discuss real estate, litigation, cybersecurity, and personnel.
Second.
Second according to uh executive session to discuss uh personnel, litigation, real estate and cybersecurity, are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye opposed, next on our district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four, aye, district five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, we are temporarily adjourned to executive session and will return shortly. Yeah, this should be short.